I went with the flag of the United States of America and to the revolver which stands one nation, one government, and universal liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to the town of Manly explaining for today is November the 13th. The first item on our agenda is for approval of our minutes of October 23rd. Are there any requests for modification or changes?
I did have one question and it may require a non-division of the matter on page two. Um, under Woodland Hills, it says that Mr. Ryan stated that he has forwarded the H O A documents to the board and he is ready to answer any questions. I don't remember seeing him and I may be looking in the wrong place.
He had forwarded them to me and he may have said before, but I I took it as new and then he told me.
So we have not, we have not seen.
I naturally have, if they're not in line, which I understand.
So maybe a modification.
Yep.
All right, yeah.
And now, yeah.
I'll, I'll do to the floor.
Second, motion my hand, second by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the minutes are approved as written. The inside of our agenda is an application by Danielle and Danielle and my keyword. This is their third presentation before this board for site plan subdivision and special use permit for the address located at eighty two ninety one East Seneca Turnpike, Manly, New York. Uh, this property is already known as Pawtucket Doggy Daycare, that's at number ninety nine dash one dash twenty seven point four. Please answer.
Good evening, how are you?
Mr. Chairman, I'll review myself. Thank you, Richard. What's up? You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I'm Joe Mastriani, I'm an engineer for the project. Um, for those who are here and not here, towards the end of last meeting, we had a discussion about changing the subdivision map as far as the shape and where everything would be located. They were wanting to get a copy of the package of the revised subdivision map.
We did.
Okay. So basically, to run through it originally, we have the doggy daycare structure over here. And we had, and the subdivision line was about here. We have now moved the subdivision line back to this side and we're going to put the doggy daycare on the front here. Right there. So this just stays empty over here. Um, we have parking up in front here, we have landscaping, if you turn to P two. That marched section of that might be easier for the city. So basically would have the commercial entrance off of the highway coming in. I am showing um seventeen spots. Somebody had stated, I'm not sure who, when we did the first one with it over there, I showed nine spaces and somebody on the board questioned if there'd be enough spaces or not. So, so doing, I put more spaces, we're more than happy to reduce that down, go up to seventeen here, uh, including a handicap spot. So basically the building and everything is the same as it was before, uh, as far as the layout and everything, the outside of. I want to say count, the outside area for the dogs belong here. We are proposing to put an input high fence. As everybody remembers, the uh, vet's office is over here, now the vet's office is a little bit higher. So that's why we wanted to go for an eight foot instead of just a six and there's some kind of a block at your crosshair. And that's basically it, we have some landscaping across here from the building. They do want to put a small round white sign up, uh, office area here. And a few trees across here to sort of block some of the view of the parking lot. Next, like I said, the inside is pretty good for an overall play area, restroom, utility room, an office, and then individual suites for the dogs. Uh, the hours of operation or anything else could not change from what we talked about last time. And that's it, any questions for anybody?
What you would have done, helps us out large degree by moving that hungry idea, division line to west here. That, that, that's a lot better and we're no longer dealing with flag shakes.
To be honest with you, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering why we didn't think of, me and my client didn't think of that before. Cause it's just more, it's, it works better and we also don't have this God forsaken drive going nowhere up to the building, this is a lot shorter up to here, so.
While we're getting there, and my, my question when I saw your apps is why do we have so many parking spaces? This is for dropping off and it's, it's not for people to stay.
No, no, like, like I said, some, somebody during our discussion, I'm not remembering who, but I wrote it down in my notes, I put down, uh, board member questioned if there was no parking. So I just did more, like I said, we were more than happy to bring it back. Okay, like I said, right now you got seventeen here, we could cut off seven and that would give you like another thirty foot of lawn off the road going through there.
Maybe we could get a consensus from the board on any parking spaces we really hate for, for this, I'm just, that was just my first thought.
I dropped my dog off at a daycare and there's probably like five parking spots.
Okay.
I don't want to put any more that you really truly need to do.
Well, going by the town's regulations, it had nine. We have less than nine, that's fine, cause like I said, they're going to come in and drop it later.
Yeah, but it might be suitable.
Where did the nine come from? Cause I was trying to figure it out.
There are several.
If it's two hundred square feet, then it would be twelve spaces. I was looking in the parking code, trying to figure out where this fell. Whether it's by, you know, I don't know how you determine, I might have missed it, but I was trying to figure out what, where in our parking it describes. What different uses is how you how calculate it, quite often it defaults to two hundred square foot is more space. So that's what I did, just out of curiosity, twenty four hundred square foot, that makes twelve spaces. But if that's more than enough.
When, when I went through that, I, I took off the dog suites.
Okay.
Cause very few dogs run drive themselves in.
Right. For a few years maybe.
You don't know, it's what the A I is.
So I mean, I don't know how, I mean, obviously they probably don't need that many.
That's what we were just saying.
If we did twelve.
I don't think.
We would chop off, we'd chop off about two.
Yeah, so while we're talking about the parking, I don't, I don't think that it, it really actually works all that well from a circulation standpoint. It'd be really hard to get into those first two spots. You're coming in the driveway and trying to turn, you'd have to back up and pull in and do some funny maneuvers to get into a couple of those. And the island itself there with the arborvitae, we try to find things that the deer aren't interested in and that's only five foot wide right there. So any tree other than a columnar variety is gonna overhang that in a few years.
I would, I'm not gonna argue with you, but the, uh, I know this is personal, but the people living behind me at my house, they've got arborvitae that when I'm in thirty years ago, maybe five or six foot tall. Now the things are like twenty five foot tall and they are about four foot wide only.
It depends on the variety.
It does, it does, yeah, so no, we're, but we're more than welcome going to change that, but we thought we need, we wanted something there to show. You know, a splitting of it and give it some greenery through.
And I, I see why you might have done that and considering that this is like mainly a drop off and pickup situation, I think that it got kind of congested in there. Coming up to the building and having cars pulling in and then having to do like a three point turn thing to get back out and congestion in front of the building to get all the way back.
We, I'm more than willing to, can you see this okay or?
No, but I have it here.
Okay.
Oh, it's here, yeah.
To come off, we get rid of a few of these, okay? Then they just look back out.
That might be something to consider.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a requirement on the spacing of the driveways here with the close proximity to the one next door because there's a daycare that's run out of the one, out of the home. And that's a drop off pickup type of situation too, I don't know how, if there's a spacing requirement, this state D O T.
It's a state.
State, yeah, so.
State would determine.
That would be a problem to know where to have a heads up, you know, as we're going forward.
We, we'll definitely check that out, but the original location that we had, the layout.
Yeah.
Was not too much difference as far as where the driver was and which member of the letter went through, the D O T went through and they said initially without seeing details or anything, that they didn't have a problem with it being there or the spacing, but we will.
Probably will make a difference.
Yeah, well.
The side distances would be the same.
Yeah, that's rather flat.
And so it would be important, I think, to show some lighting out there because at this time of day in the winter, you know, people are going to be coming and dropping off or picking up their dogs, I assume in the evening and it gets dark.
We're, I don't have it with me because we didn't get it back from the uh, thing there, we're proposing lighting on the building.
How about anything in the parking lot?
We can.
I think with the residential, the, you know, being almost entirely residential around it, which that shouldn't of the vet's office, that it would be important to have cutoffs on those.
That or even do like eight foot tall lanterns.
Is a lot of things have cutoffs, cause some of them.
I mean, not, I don't want to put like a twenty foot high.
No, um, I don't know if we have a lighting guideline. And then there were some things that our engineer had pointed out to us. Um, you know, I don't know if somebody wants to go through those.
I think you were, we will get to that today, sure.
Yeah, I didn't know if, I had a question, another question about parking.
Sure.
Um, and you may not, you may or may not know the answer to this, but then, so speaking of the fact that there is the daycare at the, what would be the adjacent property.
Yes.
And then the landscaping business on the.
Well, we want to talk about that too. Because technically what's back here, we're using the term business, okay? But it's been there for a while, however, if you go down through there, if it's a true business, if it's going to be looked at as a business, okay? Um, there's no water sewer going to the building. If you had a business, if I came in here and said we wanted to do doggy daycare, but we don't want any water sewer, it would never be improved. Cause you have to water sewer, so there's no water sewer going to the garage back here. No clients go there, there's no signage there, there's no mail dropped up there. So I mean, for all those reasons, um, code, the code officer would never accept it to be open business. Ryan basically stores stuff in there, that's it. So if we want to talk, we can, but like I said, it's an empty garage, uh, uninsulated garage. And our parts and vehicles in there just to get them out of the weather or whatever to work out. But I mean, if you want to say that's a business, it's questionable.
My, my question was, I've driven by there multiple times, so the entire time we've had this project under us. And uh, so I guess I've seen various parked trucks parked in that space. So I'm wondering, my first question was, was this parking to account for any additional parking for the other uses? And then, so my second question would be, will those trucks or whoever, like if people are coming to drive another piece of equipment and leave their car there, where will they be parking?
Well, a lot of them take trucks home from the night and they go right to where they gotta go. But there is this area back here that they can park in. So I mean, you can see how big the spaces are here and obviously people don't have exactly that size, but they can park across the back here if they want to and that's what they do now. I mean, nobody parks up in this area, I think it's all grass right now.
Right, grass, yeah, that's I, I didn't know if that's.
No, so these, these parking spaces will be dedicated to this, none of it going to daycare, none of it going to.
But there will be traffic through there to get back to the garage in and out, in and out. Like the business, they're not.
They, they go, they usually go out in the morning, they come back at night, or if they take the trucks home, they don't come back.
Well, about the same.
Yeah, yeah.
With the dogs.
Well, you can't say that.
Drop off more.
Yeah, I mean, people aren't gonna pick up exactly at five, the guys, you know, yeah.
I see, so again, that was my other, yeah, so, yeah, go ahead, I know what you're saying.
My other question is like for our board is that what, what is happening with the landscaping because if we're looking at special permit and accessory uses, should we not look at what is already there in operation?
So here's what you're got, right now, um, the, the landscaping we were determining most likely is that an accessory use to the residential. And uh, with an accessory use permit.
Okay.
And we need to determine, the agriculture officer determined that will be permitted. So now it's severed for the residential, right, cause we have a new lot. So now we got a new primary use, which is the doggy daycare. Now the question is, what is, what is supporting the doggy daycare?
Right.
So now we don't understand, they own the property, they want to store things on it and use it for whatever they want, but it's a new lot with a separate use. And, you know, I don't really care, you know, it doesn't seem terrible, but remember this board has to work under the law and has to work under precedent.
Right.
So someone comes in and has a certain use, but like, yeah, I'm just gonna use the background, like for storage and stuff. Either it's personal storage or some other business, you know, that this is going to do it. That's, that's the issue, I think, that is, um, something to reconsider.
I think it has to be acknowledged on precedent, I drive by there all the time too and my impression is that it's, he lives next door and this is where he runs his one, and landscaping business out of. And this is where he, his employees park their vehicles when they come in for the day and maybe some of them driving home. It's very tidy, it's well kept, there's no problem in my mind, but we should acknowledge it for what it is. And the comment about access, um, and maybe it's just the line weights, but we need to delineate on here the edge of, the edge of, I assume this is going to be asphalt. You're not just gonna wanna have that asphalt edge drop off and then just be nothing, we know it's gravel, we know it's not.
Understood, yeah.
Let's acknowledge that and, and show that as, as part of it. Um, you know, and I think that, I think that they'll work out, the users will work out if there's a potential conflict of coming in and out, but I think we need to show that. And why does the fence only go partway? And that is a question about the use.
Well, it can, it can go big, it can go larger.
It's not that needs to be bigger, but are they gonna, is this, I mean, we've seen and we've heard on other projects, but on, when the dogs are outside, it's when they tend, they're the lobbys because you can hear them, they're excited, they're wherever. Um, are they gonna be out here on niches? Are they gonna be having fenced areas to play?
It's gonna be like an enclosed, I don't want to use recant, it's gonna be like an enclosed fenced area. So they can go from their suite through the, the door and they can just go outside and hang out there, they can go back inside.
Okay, so that's what that hard line is on the side.
Exactly, yes, as, as shown on the, uh.
I think I saw it on another drawing.
Yeah, I think it's like twelve altogether.
So they're not gonna be like running outside, cause I was concerned that since the fence is only partial, that there could be like getting confused in with the equipment and.
No, no, no.
Chemicals and whatnot, and that, so that was just kind of a question, but, um, I don't know if this can, if the. Water business can be accessory in this zone to, uh, this use, because doesn't this use have to be a special permit to a residential?
It's either gonna be its own use on a separate lot, or it's got to be accessory to the residential by the specific permit, special permit.
I feel it's a much better fit over on this side, I think that you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Putting it in there and, um, I would like to see a site plan submission that includes the items listed, including grading and drainage as well.
Well, we'll, we'll get into that, I mean, there was, on the original one, and I'll pull it back up.
Sure.
We had, um, we have elevation lines and there's one that shows more elevation lines. Everything from here basically goes across and then it goes out behind.
Yeah.
Uh, the what do you call it, there's actually almost, if you look at the ground shots, you almost see how it goes back there, I can include that on here, show that.
Um, just out of curiosity, Doug, are we getting into enough disturbance that this is a sweat and this would be a hotspot?
We have to check and see, I don't know if it's got in the back.
How much touching it counts?
One acre, well, if it's, if it's over an acre, it would be a sweat.
This is not an acre, the original one was an acre, this is not.
It depends what you want, going on, move forward with this. You know, maybe parking in the back, I mean, we, we've never looked at a site for this whole site. So if we look at a special use permit, then we're looking at the lot in its entirety.
Right. And that can trigger with this type of a use, this garage and fuel stored and stuff, it, and it changes the requirements and of what this, it could essentially, um, I mean, I have to look at current list and next Doug's department, but it could be a hotspot, D E C.
A D E C hotspot, for what reason?
Because it's fuel storage, they, I mean, I assume, I, the, the kinds of things that they're doing back there, I've never driven.
Fuel tanks or anything, I mean.
Salt shed sheds, I don't know what they're keeping, you know, that stuff, I'm just throwing out.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah, yeah.
Something that we would, the board would have to take into consideration.
We were, I was gonna ask you, you've got five sheds that are labeled, you've got a six building, looks like a shed, but it's not later, are they all remaining?
Um, that I can't speak, the, the client's around in town tonight, I know that some of the sheds they have, one has just mulch in it and they're trying to keep the mulch from getting soaked and all that stuff, so they have that. There is one that they'll put, um, winter salt in, but it's not, I mean, about size maybe your doorway, it's not a salt dome or something like that.
So you say mulch, you mean like mulch that they're spreading for the landscaping business?
Some of the mulch for landscaping, some of it, um, there's a little bit of stone, whatever they've got, he's got just things to keep things out of the weather.
So it's their material storage yard.
Yeah.
So that's more than just a barn that they occasionally.
Well, you could fit anything into saying it's business if you push hard enough.
I just don't know what that means for code.
Mr. Mastriani, just so you know, we are looking online here and we're seeing pictures of the premises and we're seeing all the vehicles that are parked there. You're making an argument that it's really not a landscaping business, it certainly is self.
No, no, I'm not saying it's not business, I'm saying what he uses this for. He uses it to park his stuff, there's, and I said, right off the top to call it business, there is no utilities going, except for, you have no water, you have no sewer. If that was a requirement, he wouldn't have gotten, he wouldn't be allowed to be there as long as he has, so.
Well, he, he was accessory to this residence.
Okay.
So that's a different criteria.
So when they, where will they come in for this following business, will they use that same thing that goes to doggy daycare?
Right, that's right to the right side of the building.
Right here and then drive past it to that.
Yeah.
And that, that works. And where does everybody park it right now, they're parking.
Was it free from it?
Yeah. Drive it.
Okay.
That's a tree, that's what you got.
Yeah.
I'm not sure you got enough, I'm not sure you've got enough of a turning movement between the daycare and the garage either.
It's hard to tell with these line texts, I don't know what the lines, cause they're not legal.
This is the.
The doggy daycare.
Oh, oh, oh.
Right, the back of the doggy daycare, you wouldn't be able to get in the garage door.
There's a door in the garage doors in the front. They use the garage doors back. Or we could take this, once again, we're gonna take out spots, we could take the building and move further, closer to the road.
That's possible, and you would definitely, if I'm reading these line weights right or line text right, it's a gravel, it definitely has to be expanded. You know, you might, the owner might wanna have some input as to whether the asphalt continues to the back and then they have an apron there or. That edge, driving stuff over that edge is gonna chew that asphalt.
Yeah, I mean, if it was my thing, I will talk to them when they get back, I would say the asphalt, we bring it right across here.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think that that's, I mean, these are durability details that aren't necessarily important tonight, but showing these things specifically, they're really important.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree totally.
And I don't know, this is a concern of anybody else's as well, but with the children next door, do we worry about the additional traffic? How, I mean, are, I don't know what their, I've never seen kids running around, I think they're fairly well contained, not to talk like that, but like.
Contained?
I don't know.
No, well, what, what do you do?
Well, this introduces vehicular circulation in a rather close proximity, I mean.
They're never just out there.
I don't think so, but I'm throwing it out there as.
Well, it, it, it's, it's rather unique, they have a connection between a commercial business kind of residence that they're showing here.
I think they kind of evolved organically, you know, they've been there, they put the business in, it kind of grew, it.
But you've got, you've got a proposed change here.
Yeah.
Right? So now you've got nineteen parking spaces, but you've also got a connection to the other.
Right.
And I think when you get the commercial or residential, they, they think there's a high probability that D O T is gonna say go one driveway, maybe not, I don't know.
One driveway to two lots.
No, well, I don't know, that's, D O T will have to say that they're, they're also really close together. And that's not for us to determine, but.
And also, I'm not sure if this works into what you're talking about, a little shortcut here.
Right.
We can get rid of that, we can take grass too, that makes everybody.
It probably makes a lot more sense, and you might wanna even consider, you know, more of like a, a hedge or a fence or something along there to really visually separate things and, I mean. I don't, I mean.
Would there, I know it's getting into detail, but I'm just hitting that, would there be a problem having a little paver walkway? Cause I mean, I mean Danielle's gonna periodically go over there and I think in the winter time be easier to keep that cleaned out with a little walkway.
I think that's something that we would need to see on your next iteration of plans as you work out some of these things.
Yeah.
So I think one of the biggest concerns is that the, uh, landscaping business cannot be an accessory to the doggy daycare. The landscaping would have to be accessory use to the home next door. And almost as if you made a horizontal division line separating doggy daycare from the landscaping business and having the landscaping business be attached on the same parcel with the, uh, with the home. We'd almost have to require that.
Could they share a driveway then?
Well, we can talk about that, but I guess the threshold question is, you know, can, can the horticulture business. Coexist with the doggy daycare and under our code, those are two distinct uses, so that, that's a, that's a threshold issue.
Can the doggy daycare exist by itself in the R A zone?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not a issue.
Yeah. That would work.
I'm just putting the southern, this is not take care of all the problems. Is it possible, so doggy daycare is called business one and everything else is business two. Can business two rent a portion of land and have a cross access agreement? And then that is connected with that and they rent that from business one's land?
It actually has to do with, um, the code that, that says there has to be the use on the lot as accessible uses. And it may seem very technical and again, and this is a difficult thing because it doesn't seem so bad. But we have other things that come to this board and then come to the zoning office. Where the same thing happens and then, and different types of businesses, then like, well, why can't we just do the two, we wanna do this, we wanna do that. And it's, it's difficult, um, to say, well, we like this, so we all should keep it like that. Because the code doesn't allow it, so the question is, and Doug, I don't really know this off the top of my head. Um, is there a, a lot requirement size in this zone? So if there, there were a line, where would it be?
There is, and I think it varies in the R A.
Okay.
Where you have sewer or not.
Oh, we got to that.
Yeah, that's not remotely their proposed sewer, but I'd have to know it's.
Is it the forty thousand square foot versus a hundred thousand square foot?
I think that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah, so this, this whole thing right now, this line here, it's one point seven.
So I believe it's that if you have septic, you need a hundred thousand square foot. If you are available to tie into municipal, it's forty thousand square, something like that.
It sounds about right.
About hundred. So the acre is forty six, four, four, three, five. I never have to say that out.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna drill underneath the other side.
I'm gonna do it.
We're gonna say to do that. Show us where.
Yeah. So your whole thing, this piece here is one point seven two acres. So we have to see, that might even be better than we, you know, pulling you down close to the road.
Those are the things that as you go to your next iteration, you know. Those are the things that, as you go to your next iteration, you know, that'll all kind of come together for the next step, and.
Yeah.
You know, like the, there may be some tweaking that has to be done, that property line that's showing between this one and the house. Encroaches on the driveway next door quite a bit, is that because you needed to get a minimum frontage?
Yeah, because we have to have a hundred fifty feet across the front.
Okay, so there might be some, I don't know if there's rules about that kind of stuff. Because a line, a line in space is not gonna be anything to the owner, but I don't know if like, code and subdivision wise. If that, with the curb cut there, that makes that have a problem for the house lot, because the curb cut is partly on the adjacent parcel. There's some questions like that, but I, but I think we have to address, and it might be as simple as moving the house curb cut over. You know, that's a big.
So where's the, that would be a coordination.
Yeah, like there's another layer of that happens. It's like chasing.
You mean this part here?
Is that correct?
It's a bull bar. I mean, I mean.
Anything, isn't it?
Exactly. Were you talking, were you talking about this here? The distance across from there?
I was saying.
Choose best on the subdivision there, I think.
The dra, the existing home driveway. The property line that you're proposing to get your frontage is partly on that driveway and that curb cut, and does that then create a problem for that? Lot, because part of its curb cut is on the now new block.
Well, that's a, I mean, if that's what needs to be.
The one right here, the existing driveway to the house, the new property line in order to get the frontage.
It's about ten feet off.
Overlaps the existing driveway, property line cuts down through the side of the existing driveway. Does that cause a problem subdivision wise? Um, later on, like these are things that I don't know, answer to, and it's something they should think about, and. Maybe it's an easy solution in that it takes time and money to move the driveway over a little bit to get it, get it on there and.
I'm not sure if we have to move the driveway, but they may have to log this, but they're trying to sell a parcel.
And then there's utilities and all that, like, I don't know, and if, you know. D O T has to be involved, like, it could be snowball basically, I don't know if that's something that, it's something to point out to the owner that they may need to be aware of.
I'm more concerned, I'm more concerned about the addition use. And, and a, a solution to that would be. To lock it off and move the buildings back.
You mean.
Let's go over there.
I'm just a lawyer.
No, 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 no. So we're saying move this one back a little bit, and then would have a line going across.
Right, and then, and that way, you can still have your accessory use. To the house.
Yep, no, I agree.
And. You don't need variances.
Does he kind of have a T rock, this thing?
Yeah, but.
You can pull the day, the doggy daycare closer to the road.
We're gonna, we're gonna get rid of parking spaces, I mean, when we get rid of, so let's say we get rid of three, that'd be thirty feet, it shifts the building thirty feet towards the road.
At least, and even, you could even still have a drive thru, a, a.
Yeah.
I mean, you could reconfigure this front parking lot any number of ways, because it's, it's a, not a typical use for a parking lot.
Like, it's, it's, so we determined to be forty thousand square feet.
That's off the top of my head.
So. Which is just shy, I mean, so where, if, if you took that angle point, where that is, because I see the measurement of one ninety seven. Four two five, and then we've got. A couple hundreds, one fifty, one fifty, that's not thirty thousand square feet, we just need it. And that, we just need a little bit more, and if everything moved, then we've got what we need, and I think the rest of the things we would. Work on, whether you would prefer to have more, that landscaping is pretty right now, that's up there, we did. You know, we've got everything back.
It's mostly lawn with parking, but you could even do, have your drive continue through to get to the back. And have that, and then have um, almost like something come off that's almost circular and have spots like this coming as you come around.
That's what she's got to run out of the house.
I wouldn't be terribly concerned about the access, I think that that could be part of the um, special use permit. Do you want the garage? That's what I'm saying, the garage and those sheds, if they move back a little bit, then you're not gonna have a problem.
But they, how far can a property line, they have to be for setbacks, but that is.
Yes, sure.
So including the twenty.
Well, well, they're, they're excessively, they're excessively stretches to the residential, so they're not, they have real setbacks problems. I mean, I have to.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna have to make sure if we do, I'm not committing, if we do something across here. I've got the necessary rear yard setback for the building.
I don't think, I don't think that.
What, what, is it twenty five feet?
It's on the side of the driveway. It's forty feet, it's a couple of doors.
And it confirms. It confirms minimum lot forty thousand.
Yeah.
For forty feet, yeah, so that would have to shift it off. One inch, but if we move everything else, that might be able to squeeze it, or we can reconfigure the building a little bit too.
Is, is the garage just a, hmm. Nothing?
He, he just has stuff stored.
Is it slab or is it just stone underneath like a pole bar?
Uh, it's a pole bar. It's a pole bar, is there a concrete floor, what you're saying? I believe there is.
I know, it's a weird question to ask, um, for what you're here for.
You bring up an interesting point, if that building were a different shape.
And what's, I'm thinking we could, you know, you can do things.
Right.
It's really, I mean, the owner would have to chime in too, he may find that this is an opportunity that that building's falling down, and he's like, awesome, I need a new one, so actually.
I think we're getting, I think we're getting there. So we're gonna need a, we're gonna need a new drawing.
Yeah, right, good.
There can be a relocation. One of those two buildings so that we, I'm not violating the accessory use, we're gonna need some lighting. We're gonna need to know the answer about whether all six of those sheds are remaining in addition to the others. And uh, parking can be diminished, I think this board is in agreement that uh, we only need twelve to go from the nineteen down to twelve.
Well, and do they even feel they need twelve? If they don't.
We don't do twelve.
Then well. I have no experience with what's typical for that use, so let me say, if, if um.
The, the building gets configured and help, you know, helps the setbacks of the garage piece and the other piece and, and put a line here. They don't have enough um, square footage, we're thirty thousand, they need a variance, and then at the same time, they would need a variance for parking.
I think they're gonna need a one.
But.
I mean, I think they would have a variance and uh.
Yeah, because.
Something even more.
I also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, sorry, um, as far as parking. Not trying to minimize it down to nothing, but a big chunk of the inside, like I said, is the player.
Yeah.
So when you have parking, it's needed for people and all this thing, that. The majority of the, the suites down the side and the play area is not gonna be really.
Right.
You know, one person for six square feet or anything, so we could easily justify limiting down the apartment to maybe like. Six or seven spots. Cause no one's always gonna really come out of it there, that's what you said.
Exactly, and you've got the floor plan that shows that, and I suspect that there's fairly good um. Evidence and precedent out there for how many. In this type of facility, how many parking spaces are generally needed.
Right, right, right.
You know, it's easily found out by asking one.
Yep, yep.
Um, I would, I don't know, Doug, what you think, but I think it's gonna be. I mean, I'm not seeing a grading plan, knowing that they have to change next to the, the new building in order to get back in there, and the configuration and the disturbance that's gonna happen to do all of that. I, I wanna make sure that a swift would be prepared.
Well, if we're, if we're able to pull this down here.
But there still would be doing other disturbance, all the disturbance has to count, even though.
Well, I understand that, but you wouldn't really be, I mean, if I can move this down.
Would you not be moving the garage?
And get a thing there, then we wouldn't move the garage.
But remember, we also have an issue with the rung.
The rung?
The dog rung, because it's going onto other premises, so it has to stay on the doggy daycare premises.
Well, this is the door, I mean, this is where the thing.
It doesn't go all the way back.
No, but I just.
Oh, it's just a tiny.
It's just that, that tiny. It's underneath the overhang of the building, it's fenced in, they don't go through it.
Oh, they're gonna be confined right now.
The fences for screening.
Okay, I thought we, we.
Again.
As we discussed, they're gonna be confined like kids.
You guys are doing something else, I need to go. When you're reviewing things too, like. One question on the building review. Am I. The views seem. Like east to west and south to north, but.
Well, I'm sorry, those are probably wrong, that's when it was up behind the other area.
Okay, okay, I was trying to think of like that little overhang of. So then you just, you wanna update that.
I just have to change the direction, sorry. Yeah. Oh, like this here, would be looking from the back.
Anyone else on the board have any other issues? Mr. Masriani, I'd like to get this in a public hearing before she law, but I guess it's gonna be your call on how quickly you can get revisions.
I can make changes that we need and get back into the next meeting if it's okay with the board, I'm not sure how full your schedule is or anything else, but, I mean, we'd like to do that. And then, and if everything is agreeable at that time, and we'll get this stuff in immediately. If everything is agreeable, then maybe at the next meeting, you can look up what our changes are and then set the date. For the meeting after, so in other words, public hearing will be two meetings from now, yeah.
Deadline is Wednesday for the next meeting.
Tomorrow.
What, two days from now?
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll do it. Not Wednesday at noon or Wednesday at four?
Since I know you're coming, I'll maybe till three now.
Just leave the door locked, I'm like, okay, I appreciate that.
Maybe till three, I'm hard.
So you're gonna try to target November twenty seven?
No, we're going to target November twenty seven.
You are gonna target, yes, yeah. Your positivity. Hey, don't leave it, no, can't do it. Uh, thank you, your drawings have come a long way, you know, and uh, they're significantly uh, more community friendly for the news.
Anything else, also?
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and you can talk to Lisa, what are your guys' suggestions for where we got their invite is, let her know.
Oh, I'm gonna let, I'm not gonna do that, Ryan.
I'm sure Ryan's got something.
I'm sure he can come up with something, the landscaping business after all, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Why can't you let Richard come back?
No, don't.
Thank you, sorry.
Welcome back, Richard.
Thank you, it's good to be back.
Uh, next item on our agenda is currently up for veterans. This is property located at one, two, two, three Salt Springs Road, Chino, uh, in the town of Elias. This is their initial presentation relative to a site plan, a special use permit for a dog kennel at the same address. Head check number ninety one, that street that's more.
Thank you, uh, this is Ryan of Captain's Premium Associates on behalf of Clear Path Protections. I'm here with Melissa Spicer, who is one of the owners and one of the senior leadership uh, at Clear Path. Uh, we were served a notice of violation on August sixteen, twenty twenty three in regards to the kennel. Uh, this is our submission for a special use permit uh, for such kennel. Uh, my plans I submitted October tenth. I review everything uh, that was requested of a special use permit, uh, the only thing missing at that time was a survey. We provided a survey last week, uh, actually, I provided a survey this morning. Along with a letter in regards to the note, uh, noise ordinance. Uh, the survey is from a couple of years ago, as you'll notice, it does not include the building in question, uh, which is along Salt Springs uh, road. We are looking to have that surveyed, uh, and on the plan, uh, hopefully by the next meeting. I'm, I, I know this is not gonna be one meeting, so on the next meeting, we'll certainly have that, but uh, we were not able to get that in time. In regards to the kennel, uh, it's kind of a special use case, I appreciate the board for putting both kennel properties on the same night. Uh, the kennel is specific to the operation uh, of Clear Path. It serves uh, the purpose of helping the veterans uh, that utilize the site. At this time, there's about ten dogs uh, circulating through the kennel, uh, they are not all overnight dogs. This is kind of a special case situation for a kennel in which dogs are dropped off, uh, they work with trainers, uh, then they're picked up at the end of the day. There are some special use cases where the dog does stay overnight, uh, that usually does not exceed five dogs. Uh, the dogs are monitored throughout the night, uh, they have live webcam, uh, and two of the trainers. Do live within fifteen minutes of facility, and if there is an issue, they do uh, come down. Help the animals out. Uh, but I do wanna direct your attention most importantly to, last week, I did uh, stop by the facility. Uh, this is where we dropped off uh, this morning, if you had not had time to read it, I apologize, I just conducted this last week. In anticipation of this meeting, uh, as you'll see. Let's see, sorry about that. Uh, as you'll see, uh, your noise ordinance uh, asks for anything below seventy decibels. Uh, at the property line, uh, based on the chart provided, I was out there with a sound meter, I am not a sound engineer, uh, by any regard. Uh, but I took several uh, readings with the dogs in a quiet state and the dogs in an agitated state. Uh, nothing seemed to be over um. Ninety eight decibels uh, in an outside situation. Uh, in the inside situation is a different story, uh, but nothing exceeded uh, more than a hundred and twenty decibels, uh, which is kind of the standard for what an interior dog kennel would sound like. Uh, so in terms of a, I know there was a noise complaint, in terms of a noise complaint, we are meeting the seventy decibels at the property line. Uh, I do make reference to uh, a formula uh, that states. Uh, that sound does depreciate over a certain amount of distance, uh, so by the time it does reach uh, neighboring properties. It is significantly below that seventy decibel rating. Uh, I know noise is much more about perception than it is about the actual, you know, sounding. Uh, but I think what's very important to know about these dogs is they are service animals. Uh, barking is not something that is encouraged. I did speak with the trainer uh, when I was on site, and you know, when the dog does bark, there is an active uh. Policy to quiet the dog as quickly as possible, uh, and it's discouraged uh, from continuing that behavior.
Are all the dogs, when you first turn into Clear Path, there's a ranch house there on your left.
Correct, yes.
Are all the dogs in that house?
Yes.
How many dogs are currently in the house?
So on a given day, there are up to ten dogs. Oh, during overnight situations, there may be up to five.
With nobody in the house?
Nobody is in the house now.
Oh, I'm very confused, sorry, when you come in and there's a sign.
Bend those, I, I project, so let me step back here. Uh, when you come in along Salt Springs Road, you take the left into the Clear Path facility.
Yeah.
There is that small single family residence.
On the left.
On the left, there's ten kennels in that building.
That's my neighbor.
Yes.
It's, when you pull in, that's not a ranch, it's, it's a two story, you know, the garage, it looks like a residential house.
Yeah.
No, I don't, I didn't know, I didn't, I was gonna say, I didn't realize that was. Like, you pull in and there's the long drive and the main building, yeah, at the end, that first one on the left. Okay. Cause when I looked at the, the dress that comes up to the desk.
So that, from the property, yes, so there's nothing, there's no.
Makes sense why I just see a lady coming out with a dog, the dog bed out of that house, I was like, that's ironic.
Yeah.
Coming out of our house with a dog.
Yeah, so this is in regards to the, they use that building for the operation of the kennel.
Okay.
Uh, the dogs obviously are brought across the entire property, uh, but they are stored at that single family residence.
So it was a house and then it decided to get repurposed for this use? Is that how, it wasn't purpose built?
Correct. The, the house was built in twenty thirteen. Uh, dogs were first brought to that house in twenty eighteen and overnight started in twenty twenty-two. There were instances of. You know, events happening on property with multiple dogs prior to that, uh, but those events have since been canceled.
When that house, when that house was. Made, it was permitted, um, the discussion was it was gonna be a caretaker house.
Okay.
But there was anticipation that there would be different activities coming on there.
Does it give people that come and stay for services and things like that?
So it wasn't a, it wasn't a possibility of, if it's with programs ahead, there, there will be dogs coming.
Is there, there's nowhere for people to stay currently on this site, right?
They do stay in that house on occasion. Uh, if they're coming in.
But other, otherwise, other than that house, there's nowhere for overnight places. Okay, so when people have come to stay overnight for whatever, this is where they stay.
Yes, and that's in a rare occasion. You know, they'll have someone come from the West Coast that needs training and obviously trying to, they do typically hotel them typically, but sometimes it's.
So if someone comes and brings their dog to be matched up and trained here together, the dog stays here and the person stays somewhere else, and they come every day and train with them and then.
Exactly.
Can I take a step back from the actual operation and talk more about the application? I have several questions on the application. Well, and he can, but he's, he sent out an email. His email was not correct with his information as to the legal entity that owned it. And I, and I hope you're wrong about who there's the authority to sign things, because that would create a real problem.
I, I did not see that.
Okay.
Okay. Jamie, typically, when someone's in for a special use plan, isn't it granted the landlord, not the tenant?
Well. If there are. It can, yes, it's, it's with the land, but it can be for the benefit of the tenant.
Okay, so I guess the first, if I can just run down about much of the questions I had. Clear Path for Veterans, my understanding, that entity does not exist. Is that correct?
Can you clarify that?
Clear Path for Veterans is not an entity. It's Clear Path for Veterans Inc., unless there's a VBA for Clear Path for Veterans. Is there a VBA?
We just, what we're trying to do is figure out. Who owns the land? He's in the application.
Right, so that's.
Some of them.
Clear Path at Sky Ridge LLC owns the land. Yes, it is not, it is not as the application says, Melissa Spicer.
Well, okay, well, she might be signing as the.
No, it says around the application, owner of the property, Melissa Spicer. These are the kind of questions I have, because I.
Melissa is the landlord owner under.
No, she's not.
Well, I am, the landlord.
It's Clear Path at Sky Ridge LLC.
And she, she's part of that.
That, that's fine. She may be a member. She could sign and so on. If the application says she's the property.
Okay, I mean, we can clarify that in the application.
Yeah, we'll clarify. So just, just clarify. So Clear Path for Veterans LLC owns the property.
Hey, no, Clear Path for Veterans Inc. is a tenant. Clear Path at Sky Ridge LLC is the landlord.
Okay.
Just to be, I mean, if, I mean, that's, there's a VBA is totally relevant.
So, so the LLC owns it and then, um, member LLC, Melissa, and so she can sign it. We just need to clarify that.
Exactly.
That can be a fact.
That's, that's, that's right. On the first page of the application, also it says total number of lots, two hundred and seven.
Uh, that's a typo on my part. That's the acreage, or the total acreage of the lot.
And is that the acreage in the town of Madison or the total?
That is the total acreage.
For both Madison County and Onadara.
Correct.
Okay.
I can clarify that it's just the mannequin.
And it should be just a mannequin size.
Yes.
Is it one lot?
It is one lot, yeah.
Right.
But it does. At both sides.
And in the, the letter. I don't know if it's, are you, with Covenor Trin?
Yes.
Okay. You sent a letter clarifying several things, like the hours of operation, the number of employees, pick-up and drop-off times.
Yeah.
Clarify the number of things. It, are all those things in the lease between Clear Path for Veterans Inc. and Clear Path at Sky Ridge? I, I just wondered because from enforcement standpoint, it's gotta be a lease.
Sure, I mean, we can. Oh, we'll look into that.
In this letter, it talks about hours of operation, drop-off times, so on and so forth. If that's not in the lease. Between Clear Path for Veterans Inc. and Clear Path at Sky Ridge, there's no will be enforcement.
That's not true. That's gonna, that would be a problem of the, uh, if, if those are the hours, and that's what's put out in here, then.
So.
They ended, just like.
So who would, who would be fine or send a notice out to?
It's gonna be the landlord.
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 Wasn't that what happened with the, the noise thing, the sun? Isn't that kind of how it unfolded already?
Yeah, so it doesn't have to be a lease. I mean, it's like, hey, this is what's gonna happen, so if you don't do that.
Then the landlord would get.
Landlord's gonna have a problem.
Okay, so they, and they, it's, it's their responsibility to, to put it in a lease, okay? Um. I suppose my, my real question is just to get clarification on who owns the land.
Yeah.
Who Clear Path for Veterans is. Since it's not really an entity, because that's in say Inc. Um, and if we do not. If the lease is for five years, isn't that something that we'd like to know when we issue a special use permit? Because like if a seven-year permit, if they only have to.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
At least if you extend it, we'll look at how, we, we should keep, continue to do what we normally do on special for this.
And that's to the landlord there?
Yes.
Okay.
Landlord.
Okay, so Clear Path is not the applicant. It's Clear Path at Sky Ridge that should be the applicant.
It's the one.
Okay, all right. Check. I just want.
In general? The, the whole reason that this is happening is to make official what has been going on and what you intend to continue to have going on, not to change anything from what's currently going on.
Correct.
Just to make it legal.
Yes.
So to speak, okay.
To do a special permit.
Yes.
So the lease premises. In the lease between the two entities. Is the house, the house in the driveway, the house in the fenced-in area, what, what are the leases?
Well.
Wait, we can come back to that information, yeah.
You're, you're only, oh, what's in the town of Madison? It's better. So it always makes it a little confusing to help when you're next with.
I agree, but it's also roughly fifty or sixty acres in the town of Madison. I'm assuming they're not renting the entire parcel. I just want a little clarification. What is it that they're renting? What are the, what's in these premises?
I mean, it's the entire property.
So Clear Path for Veterans Inc. is renting everything in the town of Madison?
Yes.
Okay, and just that parcel, not the other two?
Yes.
I'm gonna ask a question in anticipation of a public hearing. We, we've already heard from an individual who's raised several issues about smells in the area.
Okay.
Um. Is the excrement from the animals being removed on a regular basis, is, is there?
So the, when the animals are outside, they're uh, fully watched, they're not let out and allowed to their own devices. There is a supervisor there and they are picked up after.
Okay.
And this is for the, the kennel. If there's, you know, not to say someone visits with their dog, as you're aware, they do run their canteens and things like that. There are. People walking their dogs. The expectation, they pick up after themselves, but the ones that are handled are, are being picked up after.
Okay, and then I do see you have uh, sticks in the ground with bags for people to do that.
Yes.
Uh, okay. Inside the house, where are the dogs kept?
Uh, there is the, what would have been the living room. So they're on the first floor.
So overnight, they're in the living room?
They're, they're in kennels.
Oh, they're kennels.
Like a crate?
They're, they're created, yeah.
Okay.
And that's all watched by video?
Yes.
Has there ever been a problem? Something happened to some, one of the dogs during the night?
That's my knowledge.
I mean, it's not like the people who are nearby watching. Are staying up all night watching the cameras.
Uh, they are, they are actually alerted on their phone if there, if the noise goes above a certain level. So if, if there is an issue, they're alerted and again, they're within fifteen minutes to, to come on down.
But there's never been a, like, a dog got fur or tangled in its crate.
To my knowledge, I don't.
Fairly like that.
The, the individuals that train these dogs, I'm assuming they're gonna be serviced by, too?
Yes.
After training. Do they have to be certified or is there a program they go through to?
The, the, one of the, there are volunteers as explained in here, uh, but the, uh, the head leader is, is trained. And a couple of the other staff are trained as well and certified, yeah.
How long does it take to train these dogs? How long do those dogs do?
Uh. It, it depends on the animal, uh, but I think it's whatever, a year, a couple of months or something.
Actually, six months.
Six months.
So six months later, you get another group.
Correct.
But they, they my staffer, even, right?
Yeah, depending on the, uh, person, the applicant coming in and, and the animal. And, you know, it's a, it's a moving process of getting dogs.
And who gets these dogs? The, uh. The veterans get the dogs? With life work? Who gets these dogs?
We have, it's a, to answer your question about the certification. Um, okay, it is a, to answer the question about the certification.
Yeah.
He just received ADI accreditation, which is the recognized accreditation for service dog. Entities, and that takes five years and trainers must be certified. Um, and then the rotation of the service animals, if I understand it, actually six months. They also usually typically stay. For the canine guardian, only on site for intensive training, specifically why they're there. They're not intended to live on the site. They're intended to be part of a training curriculum that incorporates some intensive training and then they go back and live with their canine guardian.
And how long is, how long is, how long do they stay there? That's the next one.
Um, really depends on the dog. Intensive training periods last anywhere from one week to three weeks, depending on what phase of intensive training they are in. Um. Dogs are usually there only for that purpose, or if a, a guardian has to go away, and one of the, that's obviously there in the family.
How long have they left alone in the house at the moment?
Uh, opening hours are. So pickups at five and drop-offs anywhere at six, so from, from five P M. to six A M.
And I get, and I love, a woman who, um. Has the animals, she lives at eighty-four seventy-four percent of the term type. And she lives right along the corner. She's the one that has access to it. Typically gets her. Pass on them, as I understand it, first in the morning and then at night as well.
So I, I think the other thing, it's presented for noise, I think his numbers for noise were conservative because in your code. And you may want to look.
It's fifty-eight seventy.
Well, that's, no, there, there, there's a code, there's a part of the code, noise disturbance, and it's specific to dogs. And it says, for purposes of this section of noise disturbance for barking dog, shall we define any noise created by a dog continually? For ten minutes or intermittently for thirty minutes over a one-hour period unless provoked. All dogs should be prohibited from creating such a noise. So what he's describing is there's somebody there, assuming that. Melissa just said, Vincent said, if there's a dog barking, they go out and they address the situation. Um, but you know, it's, it's a noise thing, so for, for dogs, it's a, the ten minutes and thirty minutes, you don't want to take a look.
And then, I, I, I remember what you're referencing, but it's the same breath you have a noise control ordinance.
Yes.
It says seventy decibels at the property line, and if the dogs are inside, it's not ex, the dogs obviously inside are experiencing more than seventy decibels. But the exterior of the building, far away from the building, you were not experiencing seventy decibels.
What, what was that done? What section? That wasn't noise control eighty-six dash three? Is that a different spot?
Yeah.
Forty-four dash fourteen.
And what was the second part about the intermittent lead thirty minutes within sixteen?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so I, I would think, I mean, just clean. Don't want to put words into the papers, no, but I would think these dogs are attended there, that, you know, if there's a dog barking, that there need, maybe somebody's gonna go out and see what's wrong with the dog. Or, or the dogs are attended to as that's happening.
It's something that, that would, I don't know anything about these training programs, but that would kind of not be part of the training program that they would, if they're there for intensive. Work for short periods of time, it's like a job.
Yeah, I mean, animal training, yeah.
And during the day, it's the dog's job to learn these things, and it's not like, it's not a doggy daycare, is.
Again, and we're not, I mean, we're probably talking about like incessant barking here, whereas you, you hear them barking to, for a, you know, command or something that's getting trained, but they're not.
Yeah, or they saw a squirrel when they went outside, because they were so excited to see it, and they barked at it.
I honestly, I, I was out there with them. I was, I asked the, for, for your benefit, I asked them to rile the dogs up, and these are, several of these dogs are, are in process of training. They riled the dogs up, and they didn't bark outside. They just kind of got faster, ran around the kennel, just got excited.
Did it get crouched before, again?
I, I did not notify them that I was talking. So they did, you know, they did get into a frenzy when they were brought back in and put in their crates. It did get loud.
Sure.
I noted they got to, you know, a hundred and twenty decibels inside, but again, outside, you know, other than, you know, a yelp or a, a bark, it wasn't. Wasn't seen as being a, a constant thing, unless it's a certain animal that's, that's brought up to try.
So this is kind of a, a. A going towards the future question. So I'm remembering back to the water district we, we had and talking about, um. How you. What uses you might be wanting to do in the future and for the water that we do it. And that the dock, um, training part of it is, is a key part of the program that you provide for veterans. Do you see this location or volume or anything, like, do you, in your final vision or your next steps, do you envision this? Being in a different space or a different thing? Is this a temporary thing, or is this kind of where you want it to always be for the future? Do you intend to really be there? Is this its final home, even in your, that your residence, that was the only vision of that parcel? Future home. They signed a fifty-year lease.
Another question? Or notice? I just forgot something. You said they signed a fifty-year lease. I know, I've been told fifty years for the main structure, but also for the house?
Yes, the entire upper parcel.
Oh, okay.
How hard would it be to get somebody to stay with the dogs? They have some. Someone they're considering now, because there is an efficiency apartment attached.
Yeah.
Were they considering?
There's no other. Did you do a schedule list for a public hearing?
Okay.
Uh. December eleventh.
Okay, uh, is the intent, I'm trying to get the survey here in time, if the survey's not here, or is that still scheduled, or?
Um.
That's a little too old?
We may not be able to make a decision, but we can have a public hearing anyway.
Public hearing, perfect.
I'll make a motion to have a public hearing at December eleven. Motion made, second by Anne, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Public hearing.
December eleventh.
My birthday, so thank you.
Sorry about that.
Jim, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I already got the second one first, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You stay in the chair and then fill in a number.